April 14th, 2020. I am the Chair of Lancaster County Board, Sean Flowerday. With me is the Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest and Commissioners Deb Shore and Commissioner Kristi Yocum. Commissioner Roma Amundson is experiencing some technical issues and will be joining us shortly. This is an open meeting. It is subject to the Open Meetings Act. If you wish to review the Open Meetings Act in statute, you can review that. Nebraska State Statute 84-1401 through 84-1414. You can also go to aognebraska.govopen-meetings. That's aognebraska.govopen-meetings. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available at the back of the hearing room. And its website at lancasterne.gov. Agenda on one or minutes approved in the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next, our claims, approval of all claims processed through April 14th, 2020. I want to remind you this needs to be amended to include the payroll ending on April 8th. April 18th as well, or April 8th.
I will move approval with the amended version, including payroll through April 8th.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Door?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items we've proved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners, these items are approval of. Amendment to contract C-19-303, watch with watch guard video using the HGAC contract EF04-19 for law enforcement speed detection and video equipment.
Utility permit number 1967, allowing Windsor and Nebraska LLC to relocate existing buried fiber optic facilities at three locations adjacent to South Hill Road as part of the Southwest Beltway project. There is no cause to the county. Right away contrast with the following. Virgil Olberg and Janet L. Olberg, Life Estate, Cheryl Olberg and Dean Olberg remainder remainder men, North 84th Street and Agnew Road in amount of $379. Wolf Acres LLC, Northwest 27th Street and West Agnew Road in amount of $2,081. Maz Farms, Inc., 1920 Brownshoke Road in amount of $1,957. First Nebraska Trust Company, Lincoln, trustee of the Robert N. SASS Irrevocable Trust and Hope SASS trustee of the Hope SASS Irrevocable Trust, 706 North 190th Street in the amount of $100. BJ Arorio and Melissa Arorio, Southwest 23rd Street and Greenacre Boulevard in amount of $415. Carol Carl L. and Carrie L. Iska, 4601 Matty Street in amount of $559. Received and placed on file the following reports, county clerk for March 2020, records and information management for March 2020, county attorney's office for January 2020 through March 2020, sheriff's office for January 2020 through March 2020, independent auditors report for Lancaster County for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, independent auditors management letter for Lancaster County for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building regarding the amendment of the Lancaster County General Assistance Guidelines.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Again?
Yocum?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes, Mr. Clerk, Commissioner Amundson has joined us as well.
Motion carries five to zero. For A is a recommendation from the person agent for the contract from bid number 20-070.
Midwest infrastructure for culvert maintenance, 2020 for a total cost of $689,286.2.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Hopefully, I'm sharing my screen with all of you now. Yay, technology wins, right? So this is our first of two county culvert projects this year. We are super pumped to be able to push this out during COVID-19 to many of the local small businesses who do construction. This contract will focus on the north half of the county. It will replace 14 culverts. As you may recall, Lancaster County has over 6,900 pipe culverts. That's if you're not really counting driveway culverts. And so we replace about a half a percent of these culverts a year. So this is a very important project to keep our pipe inventory strong and maintained. Also, I was super happy that our estimate was $733,000 for this project. It did come in just a little over $689,000, which we think is a very competitive price for this work.
I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Sean.
Yeah, Commissioner Vasco.
Yeah. Pam, appreciate you continuing to push these projects out. You did say this is a local company that received the bid. Are they Lincoln-based or where are they from?
They're Lancaster County-based. I believe they're actually based out of Prairie Home. So again, it's always, it's kind of like our own Lancaster County stimulus to keep pushing out these construction projects.
No, very good. Appreciate your efforts. And this is really good news that we're going to not only solve a problem, but keep people working at the same time.
Very good. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a professional services agreement between Aerospace Studios Limited and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Engineers Office for services related to renovation of the property located at 444 Cherry Creek Road. Building C, the cost of county is not to exceed $10,000. Work is to be completed honorary for April 13th, 2021.
I'm Damian Lancaster County Engineer. So this is a contract for office furniture associated with the next item, which is a remodel of the county engineer's office. As you may or may not be aware, we are dealing with a 1994 layout in the county engineer's office, which still has drafting tables associated with cubicles. We think there's a lot more efficient ways to lay out our space and become more always more modern to what a modern engineering workflow is. This was a project that was in our budget. On budget, last year we were unable to get to this project because of the flooding of 2019. This year, I'm going to tell you, getting to this point has not been easy with COVID-19. Hey, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're not dealing with any sort of new emergency next year. But I think we need to go on and proceed with this project regardless of the current conditions.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
R?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Four C is a professional services agreement with Sinclair Hilli Architects to provide architectural services related to the renovation of property located at Building C, the cost of county is $24,960. Work is to be completed within 12 months of execution.
Above, it is the architectural services for the space. It will also address some electrical issues and some issues that we have with ADA compliance on our workflow as well as, you may or may not be aware, for this workflow, we only have one man's toilet, which is, which is a little bit of an issue. And so this will help us modernize our workflow and move forward. This money was in our budget, in our general fund in the current year.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
S?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an addendum to the 2019-2021 bargaining agreement between Lancaster County and Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 77 under county contract C-19-0713 to amend Article 19 and Article 30 for a temporary period of time.
Good morning, county board members. Kristi Bauer, Deputy County Attorney. First, I just wanted to apologize that we didn't get this before you on a Thursday staff meeting. I think a couple of questions popped up yesterday and I take responsibility for that. This was an addendum that both the union and FO, excuse me, Shelley at the Youth Services Center wanted to get in place pretty quickly because it dealt with staffing issues. So just a little bit of history on this, FOP 77 had come to the county and asked about increasing the comp time during this emergency. Shelley was not interested in doing that unless we got some flexibility with the two and two gender requirement in the contract, which you're probably all familiar with, with negotiations. So we were able to put this addendum together. And what it does is it moves their comp time allowance from 40 hours to 80 hours. But it also gives Shelley the flexibility to go down to one male and one female per shift. And as if you'll recall, a lot of Shelley's overtime was generated through having to have those two males, two females on shift, regardless if she had enough staff. So we feel like this is a win for the county. I would like to note with regard to the comp bank increase, right now we have 16 JDOs that have no comp time. We have nine JDOs that maintain a comp balance under 40. The only person that we even have close, excuse me, we have one JDO that is close to the 40 hours of comp time, that JDO is sitting at 33 hours. So the from 40 up to 80 is very, very low, even considering that again, her overtime is going to decrease now that we have the one and one gender requirement. So I just wanted to share those issues with you. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, I agree. I think this is a total win. And you know, I think, I think, I think it's good that we're getting down, down to the one-on-one gender requirement. I also am not, I'm not at all bothered by going up to 40 hours of comp time. When I was an employee with state corrections, I had 480. I don't blink at 40. So yeah, I think that's a total win. Good job.
And just to clarify, Sean, it's going from, it's currently at 40, it's going to 80.
Forty to 80, I misspoke, I misspoke.
It's okay.
I knew that and I just said it wrong. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, question?
Yeah, Commissioner Shore.
And this is temporary? Rescind the pandemic declaration or at the end of the calendar year?
That's correct, Deb. We are hoping that this change with the gender requirement possibly will help us even beyond this addendum when we do contract negotiations. If it's a positive experience for both the union and the youth service center. And I would also like to know upon Doug McDaniel's advice, there is a date specific that if anybody does get that additional comp time, I believe it's June of 2020, that they're not getting those dollars at an increased rate. Say they use them three years. So we did put a cap on time to keep any.
In such a time, let's say six months, I'm just going to 60 rather than
the initial. So this was kind of a compromise. Get that gender requirement down.
We're in the middle of a meeting here. Please sit down. There is no public comment today. We're going to have to adjourn the meeting or take a recess here. We have a disruptive person in here.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll
Recession for until
We'll recess until the clerk. We'll recess until the clerk. Yep, go ahead. Okay. Reconvene the uh through Zoom meetings, sorry. Healing with that promptly.
Well, I'm I'm sorry if I lost my temper, but I'm, you know.
You're
It's kind of a stress, it's kind of a stressful time here, so.
Yes, it is. It's not an easy time for anybody, so. Okay, uh we were on item B.
This addendum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
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 Zero. The Senate of the Nebraska Department of Transportation to propose innovative solutions and provide additional funding to accelerate the repair and replacement of deficient bridges on the county road system. The cost is estimated to be six hundred and forty thousand dollars. The Department of Transportation will re- reimburse the county up to fifty-five percent of the final total cost, which is up to three hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me, three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
I'm Dingman Lancaster County Engineer. So this is the County Bridge Match Program, which is a part of the Transportation Innovation Act from a few years ago that um we all supported. This will be our second grant um under this program, and we did this one a little differently. So this is a joint more funding if we partner with a uh another county, which can be a little awkward because the counties that surround us don't have an engineer. Um that being said, Saline County has agreed to partner with us, and what we're going to do is uh on the screen shown, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle it, R two forty-eight, uh Bridge R two forty-eight and Bridge Y one eighty-one will be uh the two bridges that are funded by the Transportation Innovation Act, County Bridge Match Program. Saline County will have another um bridge to Box Colbert that they will throw in and we will bid the project out. And so it, I will come back to you. Jen and I will be coming back to you at some later date with an interlocal agreement to do that as a joint that so that we can get the most efficient price uh in this bid package. We will also uh when we bid the project, put in Bridge R two ten, um which is very close to R two forty-eight, and Saline County will be adding a bridge that won't be covered by grant money uh to their bid package too. So when it comes out, um it will be a five Bridge to Box Colbert plans, and we're hoping to get some really efficient prices uh due to the size of the project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Shore?
You're on mute.
Shore? Flower Day?
Yes.
F is a contract with the the Second Street. The work is to be completed honor before August fifteenth, two thousand twenty. The cost of nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Uh Pam Dingman Lancaster County Engineer, uh this is the contract to pave uh South eighty to the end of the South Beltway. And so this will give a really nice um ultimately three-mile paved stretch uh to the southeast corner of the county, which really um with this population growth needs a few more paved roads. And so we're excited to move this project asphalt contracts a little differently as new pavement. I'll be coming forward next week with our um with our asphalt overlay and maintenance. We did get a very good price on this, and we are super excited to get this project out um and constructed in this next construction.
Move approval.
Second. Please a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
R?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Previous item, I have trouble getting off. Yes, on item E.
Five, rather than four, it's five to zero.
Correct.
Okay. He is a
Enter your meeting ID.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
G is a contract with encompassed applied office furniture supply and installation county assessor. This contract shall be effective effective upon execution. With terms outlined in section seven of the contract, the cost of county is not exceed one hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and
Move approval. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discuss it? Yeah, Commissioner Shore.
I just want to clarify with Rob. This was in you, a budgeted item, correct?
Yes. Good morning, County Board. This is uh great how this works. Um it is in our current budget year covered costs, so we're good with this. We're finally happy to have it signed, so hopefully it'll be completed on time.
Which is when?
Now, first or second week of July.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flower Day? It's five to zero. Your certification regarding the number forty-two discriminating complaint procedures for Nebraska Crime Commission and subgrant recipients.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flower Day?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero for I as designation of Tina Collins as entity administrator for SAM.
Move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson? Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five to Todd Duncan has requested that that be held. Tina Lancaster County response, and this is accrual of vacation and sick leave under emergency paid sick leave and emergency family medical.
Hey, hey, Doug, I think you have two microphones open, and that's why we're getting that feedback loop.
I'm gonna Thanks. Thank you, Sean.
Yep.
Hopefully Board can hear me now. The bandwidth, uh I have both uh audio and video going at the same time, so I apologize.
No, you you actually sound good right now, so I think you're good.
Good. Um this item, uh as we've put into place the temporary uh during COVID nineteen, the uh uh Emergency Paid Sick Leave and Emergency Family Medical Leave Act. Uh the question comes before the board as to whether or not we should allow accrual of vacation and sick leave under these two payment items. Uh the uh most common practice is not to allow that, but again, we wanted to make sure that uh we were in alignment with what the board had expectations. Or if there were not, we at least brought it to your attention. Uh so again, as we start to process these payments, uh um there's a lot of different uh nuances and the details to be covered. So uh whether or not you want vacation and sick leave accrual because these payments are over and above uh the uh normal compensation that an employee would have.
So your recommendation is not to allow this?
That would be correct.
And it is not on as an emergency, or it is not on for an action item, so you will continue with established policy unless we change it.
Um I believe we just want to make make sure you were aware and we were acting in concert with your desire. And so it's if it doesn't require action on the board's part, then we'll just move forward uh in terms of an internal policy.
I don't know is that the board people accrue vacation and sick leave. Booken, I think a little bit about this last week. He did allow accrual. And is that going do we already establish a precedent by?
Well, my response to that in in a a fairly used under the actual existing code, then by its uh now you have an option because you're two new types of payments. Don't believe it sets the precedent.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for being
Does count towards retirement taxes taxed uh uh FFRCA um and but it does not need to enter sick leave uh Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
What, are we done with that? Vacation or sick leave?
And commission? Thank you.
Any other items on any response that need to be discussed?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, please move on to the announcements then.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting via Zoom on Thursday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty eight thirty AM. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next early meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty at nine AM via Zoom with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach you at four oh two four four one seven four four seven or commission@lancaster dot N E dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Lake TV City for the rebroadcast schedule. These are also streamed live on Lake TV.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. We are adjourned.